Commissioner Goss?
Present.
Commissioner Waters?
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Here.
Commissioner Noble?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn is excused and Vice Chair Blair is just running a little bit behind, but we do have quorum.
Great, thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where all wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on February fourteenth. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Our first agenda item is the approval of minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission from January tenth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
A second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. The next thing we have is the consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Great, thank you. All right, then we will move on to new business. We have the public hearing rezoning case RZ two-three dash zero 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 four. This is a request from KTH Consulting, Kathy Tackett Hicks, applicant, and Pink Daisy Properties LLC. Property owner to rezone certain property forms are our rural residential to C dash two commercial community business. Do we have a report from staff?
Good evening, Chair Goss and members of the commission. I'm Mike Rodriguez, the interim Development Services Director, here to try to present this item for you in the absence of our staff planner Gary Lightness, who was not able to be here this evening. So forgive me if I stumble through some of this as I'm trying to, I've tried to familiarize myself with this as best I could, but I think it's pretty straightforward. This is, as you indicated, it's a rezon of an existing two parcels comprised of, there are two parcels on the northwest corner of North Bank Street and Kino Avenue. There are two one-acre parcels in combination, total two, two point one three acres. Currently identified as parcel numbers in Mojave County is three twenty oh four oh sixty-four J and three twenty oh four sixty-four H. Subject property is currently vacant and undeveloped. The map, the land use map currently designates, designates it as, that's for the general plan twenty thirty, designates it as CC community commercial. Existing zoning on the property is RR rural residential, but not supported by the general plan land use map. However, the proposed zoning C two, which is what the applicant is proposing in this rezon application is community business, and that is supported in the general plan.
Mike, can I just ask you, do you have, does he have a presentation?
Yes, we have it here, Unika. There we go.
Awesome, thank you.
There is the subject property, like I said, it's those two, two parcels indicated with a yellow border, both on the corner, on the exact corner of Kino, the northwest corner of Kino and Bank, and then the adjacent parcel just north of it. It's my understanding that the property owner did own, does own all four of those parcels, the two to the west of that as well. However, they're not part of this application. So just these two parcels that are currently zoned are, are, it's requested that they be rezoned to C two. Across the street, we have just to the, the east and the north is, is also commercial. And that's, you can see that C three there on the corner and rural residential on that area surrounding that, between Bank Street and Evans. And Journey Church is currently occupying that parcel, and they're looking to, to expand their, their site by building a new worship center on that site. That's all, all in compliance with the zoning. Back to, this is the part, this is the outline of the parcel that are in question, that the applicant is, my understanding is intending to have, if the rezon is approved, they're intending to build a climate-controlled storage facility there. Let's see, to the, to the, to the west is all, all still rural residential, with some higher density to, to the left, to the west of that as well. And then south, we've also got R one six zoning. But you see that there's commercial zoning in the, in the C three parcel just directly north of these two parcels that are part, are part of this application, along with C three zoning on the corner, on the, on the northeast corner of, of Bank and Kino, but that's all part of the Journey Church project where they'll be having additional parking that it proposes on their new project. Just south of that, as you continue down, south on, on Bank Street, on the, on the east side of Bank Street is all C three zoning, and then you can see this, that strip of C two zoning on, that fronts Bank Street on the west side, below where this parcel is, that continues down all the way to Airway. Well, just before you get to Airway, and then it becomes industrial zoning. So that's, that's what the proposed change is. You can see on the, on the left, that's the existing zoning. To the right is the proposed zoning that you see outlined in the hashed black border with the star in it. That's the, that's, that would then become the one parcel of, or the two parcels combined to be zoned to C two zoning. This is the general plan map. You can see where you've got that darker section along Bank Street is zone C or, or planned to be projected land use as CC commercial community. This application is, on the subject property is consistent with that as well. And that just shows utilities in the street map showing what, what's available for this parcel if, if development is to occur on it in the future. There's photos that were taken by staff of the site. If I can, the subject site is essentially, it's an undeveloped site that slopes from the southeast to the northwest. Elevation just has a slight, slight change from thirty-three hundred eighty-six feet to thirty-three hundred ninety-two feet, so it's just a small six-foot difference in sight with an average site slope of, of one point two five percent. So it's generally a, a flat site. Majority of the subject property lies outside of a special flood hazard zone, but there's a small portion that does lie within the flood zone X that's shaded on one of our exhibits, I believe. See if I can find that. Yeah, I don't think it shows that. However, the, it's not, the majority of site is not really located in a flood zone, so that, that is not of too terrible concern. The public utilities are available on site and the, the, they will need to, the applicant will need to connect to that when they, then they choose to develop. Other departments and agencies were provided the opportunity to be able to review and comment. There were no objections or no comments from other city departments or from other outside agencies. The citizen review process, there was neighborhood meetings that were held both on September fifth and September sixth at the Pink Daisy property, the applicant's property on, on Bank Street. We had a number of citizens that attended both of those meetings. Some and, and I think the applicant will be better able to explain what, what took place at those meetings and how was, was, it was reviewed and accepted by the, or not accepted by, by the neighboring property owners who are adjacent to the property. As I indicated earlier, the, the narrative provided by the applicant, the rezon will facilitate their desire to develop a multi-story, climate-controlled storage, self-storage facility. Understand that the rezoning is the first step in able to, in being able to do that, and in order to construct and operate it in the, in the city, a conditional use permit will be required that staff would bring forward to you once that application is made. And then you would have the opportunity to be able to hear that and then take action on that conditional use permit application. The proposed amendment is, is consistent in conforming to the goals of the general plan. As I had indicated earlier, it's not detrimental to the public interest, health or safety or convenience of the welfare of the city. It would, essentially what this proposal does, it increases the amount of C two zoning within the city by approximately the two acres that these two one-acre parcels combined create. The property is located within a Kingman Design Review overlay along Bank Street, which prescribes additional design standards to the development of the site and the buildings that would, that would be considered once, once permits are applied for in the future. Effective, effective site is physically suitable in terms of the, the design, location, size, shape, and operating characteristics and provisions of the public and emergency vehicle and fire access, all other services that would be available or all available to the, to the property once it would become developed. Based on all of that, the, you know, as I say, the site is suitable for the anticipated development and once, once this rezon, if it is approved and moves forward. So based on the submitted application and the public input that received, the staff analyzed it and was able to find that the proposed amendment to the zoning map complies with the required criteria of the zoning code, and therefore, staff recommends to the planning commission to recommend approval of this progressive rezon of the subject property as proposed. I believe the applicant is here to be able to speak and answer any questions that the, that the commission may have, and I believe there's probably members of the, of the public that are here to be able to speak on it as well as soon as you open the public hearing. Do you have any other questions for me?
Mike, do you have a slide for us that has the staff recommendations?
Yes. I believe we do. Is that, that the one you're looking?
Did they just flat-out recommend it, or are there?
We're just, there's no conditions, they're just a flat recommendation. So this is a rezon, so conditions would be, be placed on the, on the project once a conditional use permit is applied for, and then we, you know, analyze that and then make recommendations that would, would be applicable to the use permit.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions for Mike?
I do. I'm looking at the, the meetings, the information from the meetings, and it says that the applicant reduced the area to be rezoned from four acres to two acres.
Yes, in fact, thank you for pointing that out. If you look at this map here, it's, what's bordered in, in yellow, the hashed yellow lines, those two parcels immediately to the west that are not circled, those are also owned by the applicant. I believe they were going to be part of this original application, but after the neighborhood meetings, the applicant chose to reduce that and just include those two that are bordering on, are fronting on Bank.
Okay, thank you, and then I have one other question. The zoning that goes north from the proposed change, is that all C two or C three?
That's, the parcel immediately north to this, to these two parcels on Bank Street, that's currently zoned C three. There are others that are zoned C two or C three north of that, but you see that it's, there's still some RR zoning just north of that C three parcel.
Okay, so some of the property facing Bank Street is still zoned RR.
There's, there's some parcels along Bank Street between, between Kino and Gordon. There's, there's some parcels along Bank Street between, between Keno and Gordon that are still zoned RR, others that are zoned and some that are developed as commercial. And then that entire strip from Keno Street south towards Airway, until you get to the existing tire shop that's there, that's all zoned C2. Those that front on Bank Street.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, I'm going to open us up to public comment. Public hearing. Yes. Do we have the applicant? Okay, do you have anything to say to us first before we? Okay. All right, the first one that I have here then is Michael, I think Bavano? Bovard, okay. Thank you so much. Please approach the podium.
I live right across the street for the, where they're going to put the storage unit. The value of my house will probably go down. Now, I moved there because I thought where they're going to put the storage unit was going to be for houses. So actually, I'm probably going to have to move again. And I hate doing that. Also, not a very good speaker. When they have the auctions, and they will have auctions on these storage units, you know, because when people can't pay their bills, how much traffic is that going to cost? That's about all I'm going to say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next I have Daniel Fleming.
Thank you for hearing us. I appreciate that. I'm a homeowner. I live about maybe 150, 200 feet from this property. And I, I understand that they did reduce the size of their request by four, by four acres, I believe. But I think what they're not going to build next to a major cold storage facility, any more residential. So that area is going to be commercial eventually anyway. So I think it's a foot in the door is what it is for commercial development there. And a cold storage facility, think about it. They've got compressors running day and night. And what about the ammonia they use for their cooling? I really think that you need to think about this as more of a hazardous occupancy than a business occupancy. So basically, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Goss, if I may to correct what I think the gentleman is stating. This is not intended to be a cold storage facility. And I believe the applicant will speak to this as well. This is intended to be a self-storage facility that's going to be climate controlled. Therefore, it's going to be heated and cooled depending on the time of the season. So it's just going to be self-storage like you see some, many of these other self-storage facilities throughout, throughout the city. This is just going to be a multi-story, I believe a two-story building that will be climate controlled so that the renters of those units will have, have the opportunity to have their belongings kept in the climate controlled unit.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more people interested in speaking to the commission? No? Okay, do you want to come and talk to us then?
Good evening, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tacket Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent. And I thought the owner would be here. Well, if he can answer any questions, should be showing up. So when we first looked at this, our first commissioner swap indicated some of those public hearings. I did hold two of those. And it was initially, the request was to have all four of the lots for the rezon. And then the two lots to the west would also require a minor general plan amendment because it was rural. We did get a lot of opposition to any encroachment on the North Arizona Street, any fronting. They did not want commercial. And so, you know, the owner had to go back and we went back to these two parcels because it does align with the general plan right now. I've been here 35 years and that's always been considered a commercial corridor along Bank. Street improvements, infrastructure, I'll support that. It's a reasonable request. So we took a step back and just wanted to address these two lots. It was a significant setback for the owner because a two acre site, you can't build near as much as you can on the four acre site. So this C2 zoning does allow up to 50 feet height for a climate controlled facility or any facility. This owner would go two or three stories for this because he's got it compressed. And when you have a storage facility, you've got to supply an elevator to get stuff up and down. People are not going to be hauling up the stairs. So it's a significant cost. And some of the other opposition that we saw, that we heard at the meetings had to do with view obscuring, you know, building anywhere along there. So by moving it to the east, we did mitigate some of that because it's not up to the homes on the, on the west. And the homes to the south, their views to the Walupi Mountain or what they address concerns would not be impacted by this, of course. This absolutely makes sense in this area. The existing zoning of RR does not align with the general plan at all. I don't know where the gentleman's house is to the south, that residential, if you're one of the commercial lots or the residential lots down there. But the general plan's been in effect for a long time. So we do think this is a reasonable request. The site can support it with the infrastructure. There's a need for additional storage and there's a big need for climate controlled storage. People don't want it out in 110 weather and all the candles melt and all the stuff in their storage. So there is a good need for it. I'm happy to answer any questions. I feel pretty comfortable with this proposed use.
Does anybody have any questions for Kathy?
Chair Goss, I do. I know we're already talking about this unit being climate controlled, but this is a little early. We're just talking about the zoning right now. I do have a question though. We've had these come up, a lot of these come up recently. And one of the concerns was whether or not it'd be like 24-hour operation. There was some pushback and we actually denied a request to do a 24-hour one. But do you have any intent to go that route?
No, I think in the public hearings, the owner indicated that there would be timeframes on it. It's a gated area. And I wish you were here to confirm for you, but I think it, it was not 24-hour access. That was not what he was proposing. But it was like eight or nine, I want to say. But hopefully he'll be here so we can tell you exactly what that is.
And I'm sure we'll deal with that during the CUP process anyways.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Commissioner Waters, if I may, Chair Goss, when the, an applicant comes with a proposal to develop the site, like I said, they're going to, they're going to be required to apply for a conditional use permit. That will be the opportunity that we can place conditions on the property to limit hours of operation or of right of other things that we could be able to do. So that, that's when that would occurs during the conditional use permit process.
Understood, yeah. I think a lot of the people here are a little concerned about what this thing will ultimately be. So there's some discussion of that already at this point. That's why I brought it up.
Understood.
Yeah. Madam Chairman, that's an excellent point. So we had to submit a site plan for this. And because of CUP, I did want to process it all at once. So we would just go through, this is the intent of the rezon. This is exactly what we intend to use. So if we get the rezon for a C2 and then the CUP gets denied at a later point, then any potential use for a C2 would be able to be used on the site from that point on. It's a bummer it can't all be addressed at once because their concern is the proposed use. You know, but we mitigated a tremendous amount of all the opposition by cutting the project in half.
Do we have any further questions for Kathy?
Yes, Chairman Goss, I do have a question.
Yeah.
And it concerns the height, the proposed height of the storage facility. Did you say you were allowed to go to 50 feet?
Yeah, so in the C2 and the C3, you're allowed to go up to 50 feet.
And what are they proposing?
It's going to be a two or a three, it's going to be a two or a three story unit.
Okay.
It is not going to be single story because we've taken the footprint away for four acres down to two. So he's got to go up.
And then I, I just want to make a comment about the second gentleman that spoke about the, the other two parcels.
Yeah.
That are to the west. I, I've got a good feeling that he's right about that. That, that will come up at a later date for another rezon, commercial.
Okay, I don't have a feel for that. I was, he actually wanted all four of them commercial. I mean, that was our intent to start with.
In regards to some of the pushback you received at those two meetings you held, what was, what was front and center with the complaints that were?
I'm sorry. It's access onto Arizona Street. They did not want commercial on Arizona Street because they were afraid it would jump Arizona Street then and then keep going down. So they did not want commercial on Arizona. They wanted it to stay on Bank.
Was there anything mentioned about the lighting or the height of the buildings?
Well, lighting was always a concern, but we said it follows the dark sky ordinance. And I heard a gentleman say, yes.
I was, oh, I.
So we did talk about the lighting on that. So the lighting is to shine down. That's compliant with the, the city has a dark sky ordinance? Does the city have a dark sky ordinance?
I don't believe we have a dark sky ordinance, but I want to also emphasize that it, once, once development is applied for, a development application is applied for, and especially if it's a conditional use permit, then we have the discretion to be able to apply conditions to the property. We could even limit, even though the code may allow a 50-foot high, tall building, the conditional use permit does give, grant the opportunity for the city and the commission to be able to limit that if necessary. So that's, that's the opportunity to be able to address those issues is during the conditional use permit process.
Was there any comments made about the view being blocked to the Walupi Mountains?
Yeah, there was. People were concerned about that view. But they would be concerned for any use at, at two or three stories for any parcels along Bank. Some of the people just did not want any development along there. And even with residential, you can have a two-story home. So it's kind of something I think that we have to work through because a two-story home can be as high as a two-story commercial. So I just don't, they just did not want commercial off of Arizona. That was the main thing. They didn't want the extra traffic on Arizona. They also had concerns about potential trash on a commercial site. They were concerned about their animals. There was a concern about the compressors. And the owner did have information on that indicating what he was going to be using, which I thought addressed that. I wish you were here to fill you in on that. But those were some of the.
That's all I've got, Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Nope. Okay, thank you so much, Kathy. All right, do we have anybody else who wants to speak before? Okay, come on up to the podium then and. Can you just state, can you just state your name for us and then?
They didn't ever take into effect that not only is it too close to us, it'll be noisy and stuff, and there'll be a lot of traffic, but it also is going to detract from our house values. And that's not right. It was zoned residential when we bought our places and we expected to stay that way. There's a lot of people in that radius between Arizona and Nevada that are being affected by it. A lot worse than anybody else.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else? You already came up and spoke to us though. You already came up and spoke to us once though. So we only get one time, sorry. Do we have anybody else? Okay, come on.
Hello, my name's Felicia Dorsey. I had, she addressed a lot of the concerns that we did have at prior meetings. Another also concern is Bitten Street. We already get tremendous amount of flooding. So do we on Arizona Street with a building like that. How are they going to control the water too as well with the flooding? Is it going to push more on our streets and our houses? Or how are they going to control the flood zone on that as well on top of everything else? I don't know if that's one, but that was one of my issues.
Great, thank you. All right, do we have anybody else? No? All right, I'm going to close public hearing right now and open us up for a commission discussion.
Actually, Chair, I have a question for staff if you don't mind. Do we have to close out the commission discussion to go to staff?
No, staff can come up and talk to us.
Yeah, just, sorry, you can sit there. Just in general, when, when we put out the general plan, like the 2030, there's a period where we actually let the public review the plan, correct?
Yes. And in fact, the staff is currently working with a consultant on the general plan update with the general plan 2040. And there will be a number of opportunities for the public to be able to, to be, to participate in that process, to be able to provide feedback and be able to hear what is going to be intended to be done once the general plan is updated.
Thank you, Mike. And that was the 2030 plan we're talking about right now. That was widely published.
Yes. I wasn't here then. However, I'm certain that that same process was followed when the 2030 general plan was, was updated and implemented.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question for staff if I may. So if I understand this correctly, that property is zoned RR, but that does not fall in line with the general plan 2030. And the general plan supports C2 or C3 along Bank Street. Is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, I believe we have a slide of, I'll walk up to the podium and bring that slide up to be able to show you what the, what general plan 2030 shows on the projected land use map.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
There it is. So this is the general plan map. So you can see in that dark section, that's all community commercial is what it shows on the projected land use map. So that, that, these two parcels are included in that, that land use map and extends all the way up along Bank Street, north and south of Keno. So this is consistent with what's, what's shown on the, on the projected land use map and the general plan.
Okay. And the general plan also supports maintaining the residential on the, to the west of the proposed property change?
Yes. If you look, it shows that there's a low-density residential, one to two dwelling units per acre on that yellow, that yellow section that would, that is shown as remaining residential zoning on the general plan.
So the general plan would not support changing that to commercial, but it does support changing the two proposed to commercial?
The only way that that could possibly be changed is if the new general plan update would extend that, that commercial designation to the, to the west and or to the east. But right now, this is what's shown and this is what's intended to be built there.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question for Mike before he sits down?
I've got a question, Mike. What city entity is going to be involved with what the lady just spoke about as far as the drainage?
That'll be our engineering department. And as I indicated earlier, once development is, a development application is applied for, then city staff, including engineering, planning, zoning, building, the public works department, fire department, all of us will be part of that review process to be able to determine how, how those things are going to be addressed and then mitigated for. So it would be the engineering department that would address the drainage issues.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chair Goss. Mike, I have one more question. Do you know the approximate age of that residential development to the south of the subject property?
The age of the, of that area below Keno?
Yeah, just in general, some of the houses that are right below, which I assume are some of the.
I don't know exactly. It seems like. I, I don't know exactly. It seems like some of this zoning occurred back as early as 1977. But a lot of that is still undeveloped. It's some of those old subdivisions that were, you know, that were approved way back in the day.
I'm referring to the, the age of the houses right there. Like, did they just, were they just built?
Those are where it says MDR 38, dwelling units breaker, that one there. I, those, that's more recent development. I, I can't say for certain when that development occurred, but I, I would guess within the last 10 to 15 years. It'd be my guess.
Thank you.
All right, more for Mike?
I just, no, I just wanna make a comment. The houses that are in MDR on Arizona, I don't see where their view of the Walupis is being impeded by this proposal. I've driven by that location many times. And as recently as last Saturday, I drove by there. And I was heading south on Bank. And that view is appear to be wide open to me.
The view to the Walupis from that, that section there between, what is it, Arizona and Nevada Streets, south of Keno, that's, that's designated R16 zoning, that's, that's mostly developed. Yeah, that, that, their view of the Walupis occurs to the south and to the east. And so the, this development on this site, I don't believe would impact that.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thanks, Mike. I think we're good.
Okay, I just wanna give us a little bit of refocus real quick. Okay, so all of the issues to deal with flooding and lighting and all of that kinda stuff are gonna happen after the fact unless we vote no for the rezone. But if we vote one way or other on the rezone, everything else takes place later. So all, the only really, real decision that we need to make tonight is whether or not we're gonna rezone them into a business district from a rural district. So other than that, everything else can pretty much be saved for the next CUP proposal.
If I could, Chairman, I would like to say that I, I agree with your statement. But at the same time, I feel it is important for us to ask questions that we did ask tonight and get an answer on those questions.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Anybody have any feelings one way or the other about the rezone?
I think it's pretty clear. It's, the proposed rezoning is, is consistent with the general plan. The general plan's been published for a while. This is a newer development. So like when these houses were built, the general plan's been out for a little while now. It seems like, and just knowing the area, it, it looks like a commercial area. We were actually, this, this commission was surprised when Journey Church wasn't commercial. And kind of, and to some degree, when they were applying to, to turn it into a giant parking lot, we were, we were trying to ask them to rezone themselves as commercial to be in conformance with this area. So I personally just can't oppose this just based on how the city plans to deal with this area. Now, I understand some, some concerns over the view, but as Commissioner Sarkisian pointed out, the view to the Walupis is down there. You're gonna have the peacocks that way. But even if you're back a few hundred feet, you're still gonna see the peacocks. So again, I don't see the view as a, something to mitigate. I agree with Mike over at the planning and zoning. I don't see ammonia as a problem. You know, this seems to just be an air conditioner issue with noise, which you're gonna get with houses that are adjacent to you out in the desert. So just any way I come at this, I can't see a reason to deny, even though I understand the passions of the people involved. So I, I'm probably gonna lean toward approving this.
Thank you. I also empathize with the people who bought and built houses thinking that that would remain residential. Also knowing that the city plan supports it being commercial. And I, I, I'm in support of the city plan. I also think it will be difficult to change those other two lots into commercial according to this current city plan as well. So I empathize, and I'm also in support of it.
Yes, although I do have some concerns, as the few of my fellow commissioners have about this project, I I'm in agreement with Commissioner Swop and Commissioner Waters on this. I don't see any reason for us to hold this project up. I, I, I see it, some other things hopefully'll get resolved further along in the process. But at this point, I, I don't see why we would hold this project up. Thank you.
All right, are we ready for a vote?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve rezoning case RZ 23-0004 from RR to C2.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote? Chair Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swop?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Yes.
Unanimous, motion approved. Thank you. All right, next we have announcement by commission members. These are limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminar, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Do we have any?
Chair Goss, I'll be brief. I do have an announcement in the form of a request. During the last council meeting, or commission meeting, we had, the planner, Planner Likness actually brought up that there was a potential issue with developers creating the retention basins deep at the expense of broad and limiting their use. And I know Commissioner Schwop, many, many on this board, we've, we've been concerned with the lack of parks and new developments that are residential. So I would like staff to, to look into, since we're crafting this new general plan, some sort of stipulation to where these, these retention basins are more, more broad and less deep and suited for multiple purposes. And the example you guys could use in that study would be Pawnee Park or Monsoon Park, which just drive by and you'll see kids playing them all the time. So if, if perhaps that could be considered for consideration in the near term as part of this new general plan, that might be a benefit for our residents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any?
Yes, Chairwoman Goss. I was also wanting to ask staff to prepare, prepare a report for us about, I know generally I hear people in support of more parks, but it seems more complicated than what I'm hearing. So I would be interested in understanding both what the 2030 plan supports and also what is impeding that in regards to the builders and developers. Just, just to understand generally what is needed in order to have more parks in Kingman.
If I may respond, I, I have not been able to completely familiarize myself with what our city regulations and what, and ordinances that state in regards to providing open space and park, improved park, park space. However, I'll, I'll look into that just as I believe the commission is asking us to do. I'm also one who I think is, would be favorable to seeing more of that type of development occur when new development happens to at least provide, set aside areas for, for be able to have public improvements like parks and those kinds of things, and perhaps trails and other types of improvements that benefit the public. One of the things that, that, as these storm drainage retention basins are being required to be installed by these developers, I, in fact, we had a pre-application meeting on, on a, on this potential school site earlier that they were, they were gonna have some, some challenges in being able to provide that. And then we had a discussion that perhaps they could use those retention areas to be able to have that be part of their playground system for the schoolyard. So I think that's a good point, that those, multiuses for those types of retention areas, they can be developed in such a way that they have shallower slopes and are broad enough to be able to be landscaped with, with grass areas and those kinds of things. I've, I've seen that occur in other, other areas where I've, where I've worked and seen these types of things that are required. So that's something we'll take a look at.
All right, do we have any more comments? No?
All right, then I motion for adjourn.